I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item thirty, discussion and possible approval of three little minutes from November twenty-four, twenty twenty-five.
Make motion to approve.
A second.
Gary?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Item four, discussion and possible approval of blanket purchase orders, most to approve.
Second.
Gary?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Yes.
Item five, review purchase orders generated by the Grady County governing bodies during the current and previous months and authorize or deny payment of such purchase orders.
Okay. It's a miracle we have one. Title senior citizens, proper purchasing procedures were not followed, two invoices dated before the P O, the total amount is five thousand nine hundred fifty-seven forty-three cents. Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Gary?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Okay, item six, discussion and possible action on reports from emergency management director, Grady County Fire Department, and city director, Bill.
Well, I just say good morning, if you didn't realize it's a little chilly out there this morning, but the roads in Chickasha are, or at least some of our county are not as bad, but probably up there in the District One, right there close to the city, there's a lot going on there. Supposed to be cold all week, the numbers are gonna be in the freezing and comparable during the day, so that's a precipitation.
Is Community Alliance going to do any warming centers or anything?
So their guidance has been, and I didn't think to bring it up, but their guidance has been, their board has said twenty-eight, now I don't know where that number came from, but that's what it's agreed on. So what Commissioner Ruth is talking about is at twenty-eight in this case, when it's gonna be twenty-eight during the day or lower, they'll keep the soup kitchen open from breakfast that they're serving through five P M. And then if the people want or need it, they can go to the rez house and sign in for the night. And so that's where they'll be at, and then I can ask Steve if they need anything, 'cause I know sometimes the county will help.
Yeah, if they do the warming center, we can help and we can get some.
And I'll let you know. But yeah, so that's the reality of that. So last week I was talking with Nomad, they realized, like I had explained, two of those relays inside the comm's vehicle were defective at installation, and they're coming back Wednesday, they were, they have responded to me incredibly, it's been great. And their field service technician, Alan, I asked for him specifically to come back, they're gonna send him, no cost to the county for the repairs and no cost for the training. So they'll come back Wednesday afternoon, correct the maintenance piece, make sure it's up and running, so Thursday morning, we can do an hour or two of training. I thought it might fit inside that building over there, but Mike broke my heart when he said, no, it won't fit Bill because of the top, so we'll do the training outside under the army, but we'll make sure the fire department, under sheriff, all of us will go, whoever wants to come, I know Bobby can come.
Unless you got ram in your barn, we put the heat in there and then.
John, we could pull some things out.
Okay, I'll walk to work with you, sir.
Yeah, what day was it?
Thursday morning, sir.
This Thursday?
And maybe I'll do it Wednesday night, so he, Wednesday afternoon, so he can work on it inside.
That'll work.
But I'll work with you.
Yeah, just give him due.
I was gonna say we do it in District One too, but it'd be handier in District Two probably.
Yeah, I didn't think of the barn, so let me learn myself. I just wanna tell you, Nomad has been on it and said, we wanna make sure that thing's deployable, that tells me a lot. I feel, I just believe we'll need it for something in a while we're getting it fixed. I got a notification from the clerk's office to look at emergency management notification system to see if it's still viable, if there's anything else out there, maybe we can use a grant to make sure it's paid for, I'll start looking at that, I'm looking at drones as well. And then I'm gonna work with Dale to gain access to the grant system, 'cause I saw something about a quarterly report that I work on and make sure we don't miss it if that's the case. And, let's see. Yeah, and I think that's it. So yeah, we're just plugging along and I'm gonna find that information about hazardous mitigation monies that are, they're saying at some of these meetings, the hazardous mitigation plan we have is in effect, is in effect. But there may not be any more monies that the state or federal government for now will give us, so in saying that, this is something I need to bring to your attention with the plan, and then of course you guys finalize it on how do we afford the money piece for mitigating these hazards, from the dams to the pipelines, to everything we have in our county. So that's just monies that may have to come out of somewhere else, and I don't even know what that money amount looks like yet, but I'm bringing it up to, so you're kind of hearing it for the first time, then I'll bring it up more on how do we afford that if they don't give us money to mitigate that.
Be great, and Jill has the procedure that you follow to apply the grants and stuff.
Yeah, they've been, I do wanna give them accolades, I called at my surgery's, my wife's surgery Tuesday, Ms. Keely answered. I thought I had marked yes for the whole family for insurance, 'cause I knew this was coming up, even though I have insurance. It ends us, if I have two insurances, we don't pay anything, that's why we're nothing. I marked the wrong thing, but Keely went out of her way, in my mind, to look it up, to find the paperwork I actually physically signed, so I do wanna give accolades to your office, I mean, it was all in, even though the answer was no, Bill, you marked the wrong spot. It was, she did by and beyond, in my mind, so. And then Ken Duke is working on fire things, he doesn't have anything really to present to you. And then Dale did talk to me this morning, he might come in for a little bit, but just so you're aware, he's communicating as a commissioners, that's all I have.
Okay, no P M, Bobby?
Well, Department of Labor just called me, and we had our inspections for today and tomorrow, so they moved them up to tomorrow and Wednesday. So we'll be out and about throughout all the facilities, and the county barns already emailed and sent all the office managers a note on opening an appeal, so we should be good with all that and get all those inspections done. Also, all I like is the evidence warehouse to get the inspections on all the firearms and which was done throughout the county, so I'll try to get with the sheriff and go out there and get that done. And hopefully I also have the D R P and hazard communication plan for twenty twenty-six, should have it only on the agenda either next week or the following week, and we should be done with that. As far as the emergency color codes, ticket to the sheriff, everything still looks the same, there's no changes on that, our drug and alcohol policy still looks the same, there's no changes on that. So trying to wrap everything up for twenty twenty-five and be ready for twenty twenty-six, so other than that, that's all I have for you guys.
Okay, thank you, Bobby. Item seven, discussion and possible action on report and work orders from the construction secretary.
We don't have any work orders, we don't have, with last week being a short week, there isn't too much, painters should be finishing your building down there, depending on weather, I know they work Friday, but I don't know how far they got.
They can get done.
Yeah, I didn't.
But it's coming along.
Yeah, we, I drove down there at four o'clock Wednesday because he had a question on paint that could have been a phone call, but it wasn't a very clear question, so I said, if you'll wait, I'll be there, so I got there about four o'clock and left at four oh five, over what could have been a phone call, but everyone was clear when I left, so. But other than that, we're, we'll be down there all week on the rest of it, so we started framing inside the new addition. That should take a few days to get it framed and then a few days for the rest of it.
It's coming along, looking good. What about the floor, when are they gonna get on the?
Not until, my plan is we finish the new addition.
Yeah.
Completely, let them do the floor in there.
Yeah.
That way your offices can move out there to that new addition.
Yeah.
'Cause they're gonna have to tear all that floor out and do a little prep work, so they won't be able to office in the front offices, I'd say probably a week by the time they move everything, tear it out, prep it, finish it, give it a day to dry, so.
Okay.
That'll be, the existing offices will be the last floors to get done, is what my plan is.
Okay, well, Ruth was wanting to look at the floor, so I thought, you know, we got it all down, it'd be better for to look at it.
The tool crib area is done, and you could see it against great paint, and you could see it against a little darker than this color paint. All we're waiting on on the tool crib is tear to come back and electrician to come back and do the finals, and then heat air, and that's, should move out there at that point.
I was thinking, if we, before she looked at it, if we waited till all the floors were done, then that way, it'll be able to, I mean, I wonder if she wants to do, but I'm just.
I think we gotta, we gotta get out there and look at it, 'cause we gotta give our guy color.
Oh.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah. Okay, maybe tomorrow.
Okay, item nine, public comments, no one signed up.
I mean.
You skipped number eight.
Oh, did I? I sure did, I did, I did. Discussion and possible action on the quoted vehicles with installation of heat and air in District Three, Two, created an office.
I figured you wanted that one.
Yes.
Yeah.
At least half of that.
I did, yeah. Van Dyke was a little bit, let's see, D Hart was seventeen thousand nine hundred, and Van Dyke was thirteen thousand sixty-four twenty-five, and Melton's heating air was seventeen five ninety-one twenty-nine, so.
All the same thing, all the same brand, same.
Yeah, double with Van Dyke.
All the same thing, all the same brand, same.
Yeah, double with Van Dyke.
Make a motion?
Make a motion.
I'll second that.
All right.
Gary?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Okay, nine, public comments, no one signed up. Item ten, new business, Ruth, new business.
I just wanted to mention that on the audit finding, the health department, the finding was, they didn't feel like the person doing the inventory and the person checking the inventory were signing off. So I got ahold of Kayla, told her they need to make sure whoever's doing it and whoever's checking it, that they both sign off and initial. And then there was an audit finding on the fairgrounds for not turning in an inventory list, and I got ahold of Andy, and he shot it to me first thing this morning, and I reminded him that you guys need it every year, that the auditors look for that, because it's sales tax funds, and Andy said no problem. So that's the only thing I got.
You have anything to add?
I got nothing.
All right, I've got Dobson, I think they're gonna be going up to District Two also, but we're gonna, Dobson's going down Ninety-two Highway, and we just completed that roadway last summer. And they got probably thirteen crossings in total, that's gonna include the rightway, the underground, and on air.
Please, thank you.
So my question is, so we'll all be on the same page, I know when we done the Nenecaw deal, they had several crossings, and then they were going under the streets, we had to maintain the streets. And what I charged them for was the aerial, the rightaway, and one underground crossing. And I don't, I don't think that was near enough, they said they didn't, they didn't budget for all of that, 'cause nobody's been charging them before, and now we're charging them. And so I just wanna be on the same page as y'all are, if there's gonna be, I mean, they, they do a lot of underground, or of under the roadway cross.
Are they internet or are they phone or?
It's fiber internet.
Fiber internet, okay.
I don't know, here's the deal, we went down there where they went underground on that Peach Street down there. I get a call from the lady that's right by her house, and she said, there's a bump down there now, it's like a small speed bump. Well, go down there and look, and it's cracking all the way across the top of that roadway. Well, I called them, and they're supposedly gonna go down and fix it, but now, since they're charging for going under the streets all through Nenecaw, in case that happens, so I'm, you know, I know it's a lot of money, but it costs a lot of money to fix what they messed up.
Yeah. Is this part of the federal government's thing to get internet to all the?
Yeah, I'm sure they got subsidies from the.
I think we did some permits on them the other day.
We did.
Can't remember what we made them pay.
Yeah, I don't remember exactly, I know we did make them pay for every crossing.
We're charging them forty-five hundred, but if there's thirteen crossings, and I can hit him up for forty-five hundred for thirteen, they're gonna flip it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But where are we gonna start?
Right.
Where do you start and where do you stop?
You're right.
You know, I definitely think they need to pay something that, you know, that if, at what point do they say, you know, well, we're not gonna put, we're not gonna bring fiber to your people down here, you know?
Yeah, that's my only concern, yeah. I don't know, could we work something out different for, cost-wise for that kind of? But then if somebody else comes in and says, well, we're providing electric, and you're charging us forty-five, you can charge them fifteen.
Yeah, where's the, where's the, where's the cutoff between what's public and what's private utility?
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, thing of it is though, it's gonna cost just as much to fix that fiber optic underground as if, as if the oilfield pipeline one of there cracked out.
I think we, I think we towed them forty-five hundred.
That's what we're charging, it's forty-five. I don't mind charging that, but I'll tell you what, like I say, thirteen times forty-five, that's a bunch.
That's one point is, six. Forty-five thousand plus.
We could, I mean, we could use our own discretion, but, but there's gotta be an understanding that if they mess that roadway up, they're gonna have to be totally responsible.
I think that's what I would do, I think I would charge them for one, maybe two, and then I would make sure to write on every permit, make them do a crossing, a permit crossing for every crossing, and write on there, make sure that they're, they know that they're gonna be responsible for any repairs to the roadway. And, but once they go underneath it, they're tied to it for life. I don't know what else.
See, they're gonna cross the road, underneath the road, they'll be boring at least six or seven under the road, then they've got the rightaway, they've got the aerial. Also, there's just one aerial, but there's thirteen in total, so. And it's gonna be like, when we leave here, I'm gonna go down and look at it, but it's, I think it's gonna be about two to three miles long. See, that's the thing, if I charge them, maybe if we do each mile, if they're gonna bore all that many, you know, maybe charging them forty-five hundred per mile or, or something like that.
Yeah, if they were gonna do. If it's underground or? I don't know, I don't know.
It's fifty-eight five for thirteen, so you know.
What?
Fifty-eight thousand five hundred, sir, for the thirteen, so you're aware of that number.
It's a change.
Yeah, it is.
No, I said they didn't have it budgeted to, 'cause they had to do free permits.
Yeah.
So the stuff in District Three and the stuff in District Two, we're both trying to hit them with permits, and I kinda, I understand their frustration, but at the same time, we gotta see our side too.
Maybe if we started here, I mean, this is Dobson again, maybe if we started telling from this point forward, it's gonna be.
See, 'cause they did Dobson to Minko as, and we didn't, we didn't do anything, we didn't do any permits for them. I'm saying that was right, that's just.
Yeah.
At the time, we really didn't have a permit for that, though, we had piped on the permits, and we really didn't have a permit for that.
What we got into down at Nenecaw, in that housing addition, at eighty-one two seventy-seven, that housing addition, southwest corner there. They went in there and put that fiber optic down, and there are places you can see it, after the ditch work, then you see that orange line all the way up, and there's no way without filling that ditching, and it's on an incline, and every time it rains real hard, it washes it right back down.
Take you to twelve.
Sandy area.
Take you to twelve thirty and show you about eight miles.
Yeah, so.
Eight mile worth of.
Yeah, so they're not getting it very deep.
I'm sure they're just vibing it in, like I guess is. I don't know. Their pockets, I mean, they're definitely don't have the budget is what the, you know, what blackners and next area and all them have.
If you cut one of them in half, they don't catch no slack on coming to fix it though.
You're correct about that.
What are they charged to fix?
I have no idea, it's expensive though, 'cause you gotta put the glass back together.
Yeah.
They want fifty foot on each side so they can put it in their trailer, and they don't wanna do anything outside in the weather. They wanna sit in that little climate-controlled trailer and repair it. I don't know the exact number, but it's expensive, I hit one before. You see those rainbow rigs?
Yeah, if we hit one, they're gonna charge us half the gazillion.
Or then in the treatment.
Yeah.
It's just a matter of time to hit one, I mean.
Yeah, I know, so we wanna just use our own discretion, each one of us, or?
That's what I would do, I think that's the, I think that would be fair fun for everybody just to use their own, how they feel. That's always be a bad bargaining chip, you know, hey, we'll cut your, cut your slack, but we hit one of these, we want, we want the same courtesy as it does.
Yeah.
And I put it in writing.
Okay.
That fiber stuff's nice, but it sure does make everything ditch work a lot more complicated.
When I built that deck this year, the first Peter I drilled was right into it.
Turned it off good.
You know personally, how much they charge them?
They, they told me the first one's three.
Okay, item eleven, discussion and possible approval of an oil and gas lease agreement between Grady County and Commando Natural Resources.
This is the one that we, like, approved the other day, and it was sitting in the contract for us to sign.
Um, are you sure it's that?
Well, I thought it was.
I'm not fucked up, but I think this is the new one.
Oh, this got that benign with it.
Think this is a new one, 'cause the last one, the one we did, we just checked what we wanted, and then they would say they would send, send the lease.
I might send that back already, and this is another one.
Yeah, I think you sent, you waved the lease, though, it was just what we wanted, and this is the lease that we want, but let's table it and look.
Same with.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion, same with.
Same.
Gary, Zach?
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
All right, item twelve, discussion and possible approval of the declaration of surplus of equipment in accordance with nineteen up on the statutes, three thirty-nine, four twenty-one, through four twenty-one point two for District One.
Couple skid steers and couple backwinds, if you hear that, I'll make a motion to approve.
Gary?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Item thirteen, discussion and possible approval of notice of auction of hands equipment.
I'll make a motion to approve, same.
Of the roadway.
Gary?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Ruth? Yes.
Item fourteen, discussion and possible approval of a table item for an agreement to permit entry onto property from Blaine Douglas Stowe Living Trust in Grady County.
We better do some dirt work, and we've gotta get on this gentleman's property, so this is just to prove us getting on his property. Donate the dirt, we can allow to the county.
Item fifteen.
I'll make a motion, I'm, I'm making a motion to.
Same. Beachy.
Gary?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Ruth? Yes.
Item fifteen, discussion and possible approval of depositing a reimbursement check from the City of Chickasha for materials into the Highway District Two M and O, eleven oh two dash six dash forty-two hundred dash two zero zero five, in the amount of one hundred eighty-six thousand fifty-one dollars and thirty-six cents.
Make a motion to approve.
Same.
Gary?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Ruth? Yes.
Sixteen, discussion and possible approval of utility pipeline road crossing permits, water line, fast line permits, and driveway permitting permits.
I've got one too, I'll make a motion to approve.
Gary?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Ruth? Yes.
So that's one and two, District One and Two, do you have one, Gary? Do you have one, Gary?
No.
Yeah.
How did you get it to that amount?
About a hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars. All right, item seventeen, discussion and possible approval of county officer, not for reports.
Same.
Gary?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Ruth? Yes.
Item eighteen, discussion and possible approval of this, request for appropriations and transfer appropriations.
First time.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Zach?
Gary?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.